Please complete a speaker card for the record. And there is a five-minute limit for it, and I just want to identify that this time it's only for non-agenda items right now. Um, I do not have, now at this point, I will open it for the public comment for any non-agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public comment at this point for non-agenda items. Let's move on to number, item number three in the agenda. Um, as a chairperson, I approve the agenda as published unless I, any of our, okay. Um, so approve. Let's go to the item number four. Concerned calendar is, we have 4.1. These are the minutes from there for the special meeting on October 30th, 2019. Um, do I have a motion? Do you have any comments, Commissioner, for the minutes of October 30th, 2019, the special meeting?
I'll move to approve. I'll second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes on, for the October 30th special meeting. Uh, please.
Commissioner Mocking?
Yes.
Commissioner Mock?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Baraga?
Aye.
And Chair Baharos?
Yes. So moved. Uh, item number five is the old business. We do not have any old business. Moving on to the item number six, that is the newest business, then seeing there. Let's move on to the item number seven. Uh, this, there is only one item, 7.1 on the, to the agenda, and this is the Diamond Bar Comprehensive General Plan Update and Climate Action Plan. At this point, I will hand it over to the City Staff and Mr. Government.
Thank you, Chair Baharos and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's public hearing is, um, among the final two tasks of the three-and-a-half-year process of, um, developing the General Plan Update, Climate Action Plan, and the Associated Environmental Impact Report. This process started in, um, the beginning of fiscal year 2016, 2017, and, um, in June Throughout the, uh, journey that has led us here, it, there's been, um, a very, uh, very detailed public outreach, uh, public workshops, ten general plan advisory committee meetings, and, and draft, uh, public review draft, and now public hearing draft documents. Um, the General Plan Update is, um, founded on the guiding vision and, and guiding principles that are set forth in the introduction of the General Plan Document. And the, um, policies for the, uh, seven chapters that are being, uh, updated in this, in this document, um, have gone through a pretty significant vetting process, uh, including uh, the GPAP meetings and the, uh, joint meetings between Planning Commission and City Council. So tonight, um, our, our effort had, has been to, uh, reach the public hearings, and when we get here, um, everything that is being presented has, you've been part of since the inception of, of the process and checking in with you at key milestones of the process. So basically, this, this is what we're providing as the, uh, the validation of, um, the, the direction being, being incorporated into these, um, these public hearing documents for your consideration and for you to make a recommendation to the City Council. Um, just a quick recap, uh, the General Plan Update Document, uh, consists of eight chapters that, that cover the seven state mandated elements, as well as the city's, um, uh, the city's non-mandatory elements that have been included to properly, uh, reflect the, the, the vision and the values of the community. Uh, the housing element, one of the mandated elements, is not part of this General Plan Update because it's part of a separate state mandated cycle, and it's the only general plan element that's subject to certification by a state agency. So, um, the housing element will actually be commencing, um, next year, and will then be brought to you for adoption, uh, sometime in, uh, in 2022. Just, uh, quickly, uh, the, the eight chapters of, of the General Plan that we've gone through during the study sessions, um, are the introduction, which kind of lays out the, um, the, the overall, uh, format and purpose of the General Plan. Our chapters include land use and economic development, community character and place making, circulation, resource conservation, public facilities and services, public safety and community health and sustainability. In, in concert with the General Plan Update, um, we also drafted a Climate Action Plan, uh, which was concurrently, uh, presented for public review when the draft General Plan was released in September along with the draft EIR. And the Climate Action Plan is our, uh, is going to be our greenhouse gas reduction strategy that the state, um, requires of all local agencies to meet our target, uh, greenhouse gas reductions, um, by certain milestone dates. The, uh, the, there's 2030 and 2050 that are the, the set milestones that we have to, um, meet certain greenhouse gas reduction targets. Since this, uh, General Plan and Climate Action Plans, uh, sunsets in 2040, we, uh, basically interpolated what our greenhouse gas reduction, uh, target would be for 2040. And the findings of our Climate Action Plan, um, research is that with the implementation of the General Plan policies, we'll be able to meet those, uh, we'll be able to meet The, the General Plan and Climate Action Plan required the preparation of an environmental impact report. The draft environmental impact report was, uh, released for public review for 45 days. During that time, we received, uh, comments from, um, public agencies, um, uh, um, public interest organizations and from individuals. And upon receiving those comments, we, we prepared responses to those comments as required by the state. And so the final EIR is a compendium of the draft EIR, uh, together with the response to comments and the errata that's included in the, um, final EIR, um, uh, volume that includes minor revisions to the draft, uh, G, EIR. As we discussed at the, uh, October, uh, joint study session with the City Council, this is a program EIR. Um, it, it's to facilitate, um, projects and activities in the city for the next 20 years. It, there are no, there are no project-specific components to the General Plan Updates of the Program EIR is, um, at a high level, um, correspondingly to the high level that the General Plan is. So the EIR is looking at the policy documents as a whole and broadly identifies the effects that may occur with the overall implementation of the General Plan and the Climate Action Plan. It does not assess site-specific impacts, and because it's not site-specific, future development will be still subject to, uh, CECL review, um, where site-specific, more, um, granular analysis of the potential environmental impacts would be, uh, evaluated at that point. So, um, bottom line is the, the EIR represents staff's effort to evaluate, uh, to, to the best of our ability, the impacts of the General Plan and Climate Action Plan over a 20-year Uh, so the EIR, um, produced 23 mitigation measures. Um, some impacts are, um, are mitigated just through the, the actual General Plan itself, through its land use designations and policies. Um, the gen, the EIR includes additional specific impacts that, um, will have to be mitigated, um, as we review individual projects. We'll have to refer to the mitigation monitoring program that's a summary of those mitigation measures and ensure that they're being, uh, followed. There were four impact areas where the general, where the EIR found that, um, impacts cannot be mitigated or avoided, um, to levels that would be less insignificant. Those aren't the categories of air quality, cultural resources, and transportation. Uh, those, those impacts that can't be avoided or mitigated to levels of less than significance would, uh, still be, um, there even if we chose not to adopt a General Plan Update. For example, in, in the category of air quality, um, being located in South Coast Air Basin, it already exceeds state and federal levels for ozone and certain particulate matter in, in the air. And that, any activity would contribute to that cumulative effect. So technically, it has to be regarded as a significant unavoidable impact. In the category of cultural resources, um, because the State Office of Historic Preservation, um, age threshold for a potentially historic structure is 45 years, and because the city does not have a citywide, uh, historic, uh, resource survey, um, there is a potential impact with, um, the, the possible loss of, of historic resources, uh, throughout the lifetime of the General Plan. Considering that tract housing in Diamond Bar, much of it is, uh, of that vintage, it's, it's just basically unavoidable that we're going to encounter, um, situations where, because they're more than 45 years old, they, they meet that, um, criteria set forth by, uh, the Office of Historic Preservation. In the category of trans, transportation, um, the impact is considered significant, um, and unavoidable if vehicle's miles, truck, vehicle miles traveled would exceed baseline conditions. And even though there are, um, uh, General Plan land use designations that, that promote compact development, and we have complete streets, policies, and so forth, for the foreseeable future, uh, at least, we, it, it, we, we can't, we can't say that there's going to be a net reduction in vehicle miles traveled. In fact, there, there will be, and that's simply unavoidable. So that has to be considered, um, among those significant unavoidable impacts. Uh, there are some related documents to the environmental impact report. Should actually say final impact report on the, uh, on the heading there, but there's the mitigation monitoring program that's, um, attached to the staff report and part of the resolution, um, that, and then there, because, because there are significant unavoidable impacts, um, the City Council would have to make a statement of overriding considerations before they could adopt the General Plan Update. And that statement of overriding considerations would have to be their findings that the, the benefits of the General Plan Update outweigh those, uh, significant unavoidable So the, the process for certifying the EIR is for the Planning Commission to make a re, a recommendation to the City Council, uh, whether or not to certify the EIR and adopt the mitigation monitoring program, and to recommend that the City Council prepare and adopt a statement of overriding considerations. Once those recommendations are made, they'll be forwarded to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision, uh, whether to certify the final EIR, uh, to adopt a statement of overriding considerations, and to adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. If they do so, then they may, um, adopt the General Plan Update and the Climate Action Plan. As, uh, as indicated in the final environmental impact report under appendix, or under, uh, chapter four, uh, there have been some minor revisions to the General Plan Update and EIR, um, since the draft EIR and the public review draft, uh, General Plan were released for public review. One of them is updating the goal and policy language, um, revising, um, the neighborhood mixed-use boundary, revising the vegetation communities map, um, adding another, uh, wildlife movement, uh, choke point map to the, um, to the EIR and General Plan Document, and to make a correction to the, um, to our waterways and tributaries map. So, so very quickly, um, as, as we went through, uh, during the October 8th study session, um, the, uh, the joint Planning Commission and City Council, uh, uh, direction was that some of the policy language was, uh, too restrictive, not flexible enough, or too draconian. So we went through the process of, um, making the policy language, um, more in line with statements of intent, um, to be implemented, um, as the General Plan is used for future For the, um, for the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, um, we received comments, uh, from the owner of this property that is, that was along the south border of the, um, Neighborhood Mixed Use District, which is a very topographically challenging, uh, site that goes roughly between the, uh, 60 freeway off-ramp and extends north and, um, shares a common property line with the Wiener Schnitzel property. In evaluating their concern, we, staff did, um, agree that it would be very hard to meet those neighborhood mixed-use, uh, uh, land use and design, um, goals and policies, uh, for creating a, um, for creating a, a walkable, um, mixed-use district. So, um, in light of that, we are recommending that the property retain its existing, uh, commercial, General Plan designation, um, detaching it from the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, um, and that would also include the Wiener Schnitzel property. So we have a hard boundary at Senset Crossing Road, so those, those properties would, uh, remain commercial. They would still be subject to the other General Plan, um, uh, chapters and, um, and policies. So for example, the community character and place making chapter sets forth, uh, design walkability, architectural quality, uh, criteria that, um, future development on, on those sites would need to meet. We've also revised, pardon me, the vegetation communities map that, um, are, um, provided in figure 5.2 of the General Plan Document and figure 3.3-1 of the EIR. Um, there is, the, the primary change there is that the, on the left, that, that's the, uh, draft EIR version, uh, where all of the, uh, the larger masses of yellow that's, that's classified as walnut woodland. Um, we've, um, reevaluated it, and it's now a, uh, not much of that, um, is, is oak woodland, so the, the relative, uh, proportions between oak and walnut woodland is about 64% oak woodland to 36% walnut woodland. Um, there was a, a typographical error in the staff report that, uh, referred to that area that's now, now, uh, from yellow to green as, uh, mixed oak and walnut. It's actually, the green area is, um, is designated walnut, while the yellow is, is, I mean, the ye, the green is oak, the yellow is walnut, and we're not intermixing those communities on the map anymore. Also, in, in response to, uh, comments received, um, we provided a, a new figure to add to the final EIR and General Plan that's showing, uh, migration, uh, or wildlife movement choke points, which show in our, um, in our wildland areas, in our open space areas, um, any, um, any constrictions or any bouldernets that are potentially at risk of, uh, losing connectivity to other, uh, to, to the continuum of those, those linkages. So that as we look at future planning efforts, whether there is, um, enhancements to our trail system, or if there is development adjacent to those areas proposed, uh, this will provide us with the, uh, the guidance regarding the, the vulnerabilities if, if they are near those choke points. Uh, also, we've made one minor revision to the waterway and tributaries map. Um, the, um, Bray Canyon Creek, uh, channel that runs from, uh, Pathfinder down to the, uh, southern city limits, uh, before it becomes an unchanalized wa, waterway, again, was not depicted in the, in the left version of that figure, which was in the draft documents. So we've corrected that in the final EIR and in the public hearing draft of the General Plan. So, um, before I turn it over to the Commission, I want to go through the, uh, staff recommendations this evening. Um, our recommendations are for you to adopt the, the, um, attached resolutions recommending that the City Council, um, certify the final environmental impact report, that they prepare and adopt a statement of overriding conditions, and adopt mitigation and monitoring and reporting program for the Diamond Bar General Plan Update and Climate Action Plan. Also, that they adopt the, chap, Diamond Bar General Plan Update, and that they adopt the Diamond Bar, uh, Climate Action Plan. That concludes my presentation for this evening. Um, I'm, I'm prepared to take your questions. We have representatives, um, from DIET and BUD, and from FER and PIERCE, to, uh, also, we're, and we're all available to answer your questions in general, or if you have specific questions or comments in the topics of biology of transportation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Government. Um, at this point, uh, before opening it to the public, uh, in this detail, I would give the chance to the Commission if they have any question.
I'll probably have questions after, but that's, that's.
Okay. So it looks like everybody is holding off till the, I don't know, minute for the public. So at this point, I'm going to open it for the public hearing, and I have few, um, speaker cards in front of me. Just want to identify that, uh, you have five minutes for every speaker, because we have few of them, and we do appreciate you coming forward for this. First, first one for 7.1, I have, uh, Mr. Robert Cruz. Can you please come forward? And speaker, uh, your name and, uh, let me see it.
Good evening, uh, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Robert Cruz. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for Southern California Gas Company. I'd also like to, uh, basically by opening up, I think you have copies of the letter, that, and I'm going to be reading the record, okay? So just so you know, I hate to do that, but I needed to capture my thoughts, this is my way. Thank you. So we are the nation's natural, Arge's Natural Gas Distribution Utility, and are committed to helping achieve both the state, the states and the city of Diamond Bar's local environmental goals, as discussed the general, draft General Plan and draft Climate Action Plan. We submitted comments in a letter on October 23rd to staff regarding policies and strategies that demonstrate how we can contribute to attainment of your goals, of these goals. In our comments, we conveyed the draft, uh, cap of, uh, Climate Action Plan that include considerations of synergies, I'm sorry, um, that exist between the natural gas system and the city's goals for achieving emission reductions and local climate adapt, adaptation priorities. These include synergies between the use of renewable natural gas, enhancing local climate resiliency, as well as increased emissions reductions and increased landfill diversion and organic recycling. First, we strongly support your Climate Action Plan policies aimed to increase community resiliency and capacity to resist and recover from climate change impacts. The resiliency of the local energy system is integral to achieving this goal. An energy system diversification is critical to help ensure reliable energy provision to communities during climate events. This is especially true for critical facilities like hospitals and community centers. As seen 2017 and 2018 wildfires and mudslides, and right now, California, that's what we're known for, is wildfires. It's a really sad. The electric system is highly vulnerable to climate impacts because it is above ground and can leave hu, can leave hundreds of thousands of residents without power for days at a time. We've seen PG&E and STG&E and Edison do that, the communities basically, basically turn off the power. These impacts are further exacerbated with the public safety power shut-off events, which cut power to thousands of residents and takes days or weeks to restore, and that's what we've been seeing lately. As stated by the UN Framework Convention on Climate Change, over reliance on a single energy source can create avoidable and unnecessary risk for public safety, and the economy can cause increased suffering during climate events. In contrast, because the natural gas system is mostly underground, is inherently resilient to climate impacts, and is shown to withstand floods, storms, and wildfires. For example, after Hurricane Harvey in 2017, shuttles running on natural gas were able to continue transporting people to safety, and hospitals that had on-site combined heat and power systems powered by natural gas were able to provide urgent medical attention despite widespread flooding. Natural gas is resilient during these types of disasters. These demonstrate the critical role gas system can plant, can play in supporting local and regional energy supply resilience. in supporting local and regional energy supply resilience and highlight the importance of energy supply diversification and reliable energy provision. Not only does the gas system help local resiliency, it can also help reduce city emissions, especially from waste. The gas company has a commitment to make renewable natural gas 20% of our supply to all our customers by 2020. And we are, and part of that strategy or vision is to become the cleanest natural gas utility in North America. As we have communicated, renewable natural gas can be produced from emissions from existing waste sources and therefore can capture emissions from otherwise being emitted directly into the air. This helps reduce both regional and local methane and GHG emissions. This also lies with local waste reduction goals and renewable natural gas can be reduced from organic waste, food waste, cow manure, and basically even wastewater waste. It can help attainment of wastewater diversion goals. Several cities have already incorporated such efforts as part of their waste management strategy. For example, the city of Paris, the trash collector CRN recently built a waste processing facility and is using an anaerobic digester to collect methane emissions from the waste stream that they're collecting and use it as renewable natural gas. We encourage the planning commission to incorporate consideration of these comments, the ones I'm making tonight and the ones that we submitted in the letter, into the draft climate action plan. Emphasize that strong alignment between city council objectives and city planning policies regarding balanced energy resources will create significant long-term environmental benefits through emissions reductions and energy system resiliency.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Your five minutes is up.
Can I just finish one paragraph, please?
It will be unfair with a thirty-four. I appreciate you coming forward because there's, we have a lot of
Oh, no, that's fine. As long as you have my letter, my comments, I appreciate the time.
We do, we do have, and we read it. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. Second one I have in front of me is Mr. Robert Hamilton. Will you please come forward and appreciate
Okay, I have a presentation that needs to be hooked up to the doctor. All right. I'll just read out this, but there's a lot of graphics here, so it's not going to be quite as good.
Thank you very much.
I'm Robert Hamilton. I'm a biologist and I prepared a biological resources report on behalf of a group of residents that your consultants incorporated into the EIR for the general plan. I just had some comments on the final EIR. I wanted to point out that figure 5.4 in the final EIR showed basically no special status species anywhere within the city limits. And that was not consistent with what I showed in my report and what is entered into online databases that are normally, consultants would normally access as part of doing the basic research for this kind of project. So I wanted to enter into the record, you know, records of approximately 15 different species that I personally documented and that others documented within the city limits, just within the last few years. And I'll do that in the submission to the city. The other thing I wanted to point out was that while I appreciate that several of the items from my report were incorporated into your report, I thought that my approach to large-scale planning was a little more conducive to looking at the whole and seeing the different parts of it and then trying to see how you could plan so that in 2040, when you're doing this again, you don't find that it's all been done sort of in a piecemeal way. And so to do that, I had mapped out the open spaces and then sort of characterized what the resources were and what kind of protective overlays could be developed so that you could see how they fit together and try to avoid the kind of sort of project-by-project planning that doesn't lend itself as well toward conserving the ecological values of the whole. And the response to that approach from the city was, as presented in the comment, the establishment of biological protection overlays goes well beyond the typical scope of the general plan. While it is acknowledged that such overlays are useful in the design of projects, they are more appropriate to include at a specific planning stage after more detailed information about a project's biological baseline is discovered and known. And having done this for 30 years, my understanding is that you devise overlays at the large-scale planning stage, not for individual projects. That allows the individual project to be designed to make that consistent with the large-scale planning direction that's identifying the general plan. So I just wanted to make that point. And there was one other quote from the city that I wanted to mention was, when I presented this data on the specific sightings of rare animals within the city, the response was that presentation of data as suggested in the comment could lead to the interpretation that the existing sightings and records are the only place where special status species may occur. And I don't think that that's what people think when they see that a bird was seen here, that that's the only place that bird could occur. But my point was that your map shows nothing where actually things have been documented. So I just thought it was more misleading to show nothing versus showing what had been seen. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robert. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Appreciate the correction. Now I have Mr. Lee Paulson, the next. Mr. Paulson, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Every time I've addressed you, I've spoken about the time, let's take the time to get this right. I've said that it's my belief that it is possible to find agreement so that everyone's issues get resolved and in a good way. And I've been summarily ignored. But now here we are. You're poised to approve the general plan and EIR documents presented to you by the city. And for those of us who have spent the last several years studying and learning about what proper general plans and EIR should look like, I hate to say this, but what you have before you is an embarrassment. I could go on for much longer than my five minutes discussing all the things which are wrong with these documents and the process by which they were created. But I, here are a few highlights. The 1995 general plan was filled with so much of what council members call flexibility that it allowed some horrendous developments, such as Millennium, to be inflicted upon our city. The language haircut you approved to our last, in our last joint meeting, gives the city officials the same flexibility to keep inflicting this type of development upon our city for the next 20 years. And Millennium, by the way, was just assessed a $4.4 million fine by the Water Board. And I just want to know, is that what you guys want for our city's future? The California government folks who wrote the general plan manual addressed the issue of flexibility. They said, quote, "For a policy to be useful as a guide to action, it must be clear and unambiguous. Adopting broadly drawn and vague policies is poor practice. Clear policies are particularly important when it comes to judging whether or not zoning decisions, subdivisions, public works, projects, et cetera, are consistent with the general plan. It is better to adopt no policy than to adopt a policy with no backbone." Could it be possible, we just wonder, could it be possible that the folks who wrote the manual actually knew what they were doing? How is it that you and the city council seem to think that you know more about general plan language than the people that wrote the book, that wrote the manual about how there should be, the language should be written? 172 policy changes meet any definition of significant, which CECLAT statute requires a new 45-day comment period. That didn't happen. Then the study sessions were scrubbed from the city's event portal. It goes on. The process was so flawed, all we can do is shake our heads. So the question you must answer now and live with is how do you wish to be remembered? Because when you sign off on these documents, they become yours. But you have the power to slow the bus down, to slow the process down and get some more input and get it right. And the question is, do you have the courage to do that? Because the language issue is just the tip of the iceberg. Others will go into more detail, and they did, about the environmental issues. But from our perspective, the entire EIR meets the state's definition of fundamentally and basically inadequate. Because a proper EIR is supposed to allow the facts to determine the best alternative. Diamond Bar's DIR is just backwards. It starts with a presupposed conclusion and then bends the facts to meet that conclusion. In addition, the alternatives offered are not feasible because the golf course is still in operation. You can't base a 20-year plan, alternatives for a 20-year plan on the fantasy that the county are going to give us the golf course land. That's just not how CECLAT works. So all attempts to bring this up during G-PAC meetings were blown up, but then you weren't there. So how would you know? And you could talk, you could talk offline to those of us who are knowledgeable about how this process should work, but that too seems to be out of the mix. So we ask, who do these documents truly represent? From all appearances, it's not the citizens of this city. Thank you very much.
Thanks for respecting the time, Mr. Paulson. I appreciate that and we all heard you. Next, I have Grace Lynn Hayes. I hope I pronounced that right. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. I too have been attending a lot of the G-PAC meetings and participated a great deal in the public discourse and the opportunity to comment on the general plan. So tonight, I hope that our comments can still make a difference and that it can convince you to use whatever, you know, your authority can to continue to improve it and really meet the goals of the community. Throughout the general plan process, the residents of Diamond Bar have strongly expressed their desire to protect and preserve the valuable ecological resources of Trezor Manos. The city has expressed that it shares this goal. So far, the general plan and the draft EIR, as it is written, does not prevent its development. The Diamond Bar portion of Trezor Manos is currently designated as a planning area, which would allow development as currently described in general plan's land use. We provided you with attachment, you know, on those packets of those. The only thing necessary to develop this area is a plan according to the California Code 65640. Moreover, the language of the DEE restriction allows its use as, and I quote from the DEE restriction language, "open space, public use, or preservation." We are concerned that this language of public use can be defined as any development considered beneficial by the city. During the last general plan housing update in 2014, the city designated 16 acres of Trezor Manos as high-density housing to satisfy SCAG and meet HDC's requirements. During the next update in 2022, more development could be allowed in Trezor Manos to address the housing shortage, since according to city officials, the state will not count infill development towards meeting our fair share of housing. So Trezor Manos can be spared development if tonight it is designated as open space. At the last G-PAC, public discourse and deliberation about Trezor Manos was not allowed due to pending litigation. We now insist that this be discussed and deliberated thoughtfully before approving the general plan. We urge the planning commission to formally designate Trezor Manos as open space to reflect the will of the people and provide clear direction for the future of Diamond Bar. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your input. After that, I have Ms. Robin Smith. Can you please come forward?
Good evening, honorable counsel. Thank you for letting me speak this evening. This thick book that I've just set up is the California Manual of Vegetation. And when you talk about language and description of habitats, this book is the textbook that has the authority. And it's based on documents like this that I say the following information to you. The Diamond Bar general plan and FBI documents, as it is offered at this hearing, is a disappointment. Overall, it displays information which is vague, fragmented, erroneous, and curiously different than scientific standard definitions used by the established ecological monitoring community and state and federal conservation agencies. Standardized specific language in natural resources conservation is important to define. We need this language to be specific in order to defend, protect, restore natural communities. The language and descriptions used in the Diamond Bar Resource Conservation Chapter and the FBI are inconsistent with standards. I'll give you some examples. Not to get deeply into it, but the vegetation communities in 5.2 are still a little wonky. They're not quite right because they seem to insist that the dominant tree species in our city is walnut. And it's not, it's oak. And at the very least, in the legend, it should say oak/walnut woodlands, maybe mixed hardwood. It should match one of the copies that I copied out of this book I attached with my speech. And by the way, there are three copies in there of different plant, tree communities. One is walnut, one is oak, and one is sycamore. And if you carefully look at them, you'll notice that there is some mixed species, but the dominant species are measured by the presence of so many trees. And so I'm not saying there's no walnut trees. It's like on my oak woodland, I have four walnut trees and 25 oaks. And that would be a co-slyb oak walnut woodland. Another example, which is almost ironic, is Sycamore Canyon Park is depicted as co-slyb oak woodland in the legend. And yes, there are plenty of oak trees there. But what is missing is the sycamore trees. That's why we call it Sycamore Canyon. So I'm sort of confused where, I think that's a color that's red. We don't see that depicted in Sycamore Canyon at all. So why is it not designated as Sycamore Reparian, which it is? In your packet, you also have a map from the USGS that identifies Sycamore Canyon as a reparian habitat. And you have the attachment, so you know about that. So my question is, why are the ESA designations confusing and inconsistent with the authority source? You know, it's had me confused. The third item is, the city has received numerous reports of an app catcher. I don't see that in the revised revisions at all. And that's a significant find. And what's going to happen with that? Are we going to just ignore those findings? You know, that's a federally protected species. And I don't think we do our community a good service at all by ignoring the facts. And item number four, it says in the 7.1 comments, it says, the revision comments claim that the map changes do not change the environmental comments claim that the map changes do not change the environmental conclusions. That is a false statement. Please consider the following. Incorrect information can lead to many expensive problems, including potential litigation. Misidentifying existing conditions of natural communities contribute to mistakes in conservation planning, causing degradation or conversion or loss of a natural system. Here's an example. I have the unhappy task to tell you that the Sycamore Canyon Repair Project, the erosion repair, is not a good thing. The erosion repair problem is fine, but we have replaced an authentic sycamore riparian watershed with ornamental landscape, which is invasive, almost an acre's worth of acacia redolens is planted on the hillside. Here's the picture in the new magazine. That's not a good thing. I talked to the city about that, and they wouldn't really commit to replacing the oak trees and the willow trees and the other plant community that goes on that slope. So I, I'm confused here. We are already degrading a natural habitat in Sycamore Canyon Park and bringing down the biodiversity level and causing other damages. So I appreciate that you look at these problems and consider them before you approve this flawed document. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward. We all heard you. And now I have the next, Mr. Douglas Barcon. Can you please come forward, please?
Good evening, members of the planning commission, city staff, and consultants who are here too. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the response I got from the city regarding the comment that I sent in regarding noise from the EIR and/or general plan. And I realized just last night that part of the trouble was this was overlooked in the EIR. I didn't even notice it, that it was bypassed. So I'm going to bring this up for the response. Okay, and once again, my name is Douglas Barcon, before I forget. Okay, this is a letter I drafted to submit to Grace. I'm going to read it anyway, just like the previous person did on the gas company. Okay. The California Government Code Section six five three oh two F requires each California city to include a noise element in its general plan. This is addressed in the Public Safety Section of the Draft General Plan, specifically in section seven point eight. Noise sources should include passenger and freight railroad operations. As per the draft general plan, the noise element is required to map noise level contours such that it may be used as a basis for land use decisions and should include noise mitigation strategies. Now, in this case, what I'm bringing up is not really site-specific, so that's part of the response. The city overlooked that the Union Pacific Rail line by the transit-oriented mixed-use area near Brea Canyon Road continues eastward along Ferraro Parkway in the City of Industry and through the Landerman property, past the nearby homes along the route, which is basically near the, the golf field and so forth. The eastward part of the rail line slipped through the cracks and was not included in the draft general plan or the draft EIR. The city concentrated on the TOD mixed-use area and ignored the rest. That rail line or lines, there are two, I believe, that rail line or lines are used for heavy freight and MetroLink. The city's reply to my EIR comment on railroad noise only noted MetroLink, which is the minor source of railroad noise. It did not address the significant number of loud, heavy freight trains traveling to and from the Long Beach and Los Angeles harbors, heading to or from the entire country. I provided sound level measurements from the residential area near Prospecters Road and Sunset Crossing Road. These levels appear to have been ignored, and there was still no noise contour shown on maps for that residential area. The noise contours in Figure seven dash eleven on existing noise contours 2016 only address road and highway noise, and these were not updated to include other areas in Figure seven dash twelve projected noise contours 2040. The projected 2040 noise contours actually show a decrease in noise levels on the roadways and highways. Further, the city's response to my comments stated ambient noise measurements were conducted for the general plan update to characterize the general ambient noise environment in the program area, however, not for impact assessment in the program EIR. But doesn't the I in EIR mean impact? As per draft EIR page three dot ten dash twenty-five regarding impacts discussed on a qualitative basis, I provided, I provided sound levels from specific noise sources. I believe such sound level measurements or official sound level measurements should be included in the EIR and the general plan. Policy PSP dash fifty-two cited in the city's response to my draft EIR comments is specific to highways and freeways, not railroads. Policy PSP dash fifty-one addresses railroads and mitigation of railroad noise by implementation of a quiet zone and other methods, but it doesn't mean much if the area is not recognized as having a noise problem. A railroad quiet zone will have no impact other than stopping locomotive horns on the area addressed in my draft EIR comments. While horns are loud, they are a much shorter duration than the noise from the locomotives and rolling stock. Moreover, the 1995 Diamond Bar general plan did not address this in any depth. Since the noise contour maps in the current draft EIR did not address the railroad noise, I noted in my comments, it is if the city does not recognize the area around Sunset Crossing Road and Prospecters Road as having a problem with railroad noise, even though it has been about twenty-five years since the 1995 general plan. And other than that, I just would like the planning commission, the city, to look further at how to handle the noise issue that really has not been addressed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your input. We all knew you. Next, I have Mr. Greg Fritschel. I hope I pronounced it right. Correct me if I'm wrong.
My name is Greg Fritschel, and I'm a resident city walnut. However, I grew up in this area and I've lived here nearly my entire life. I had family, relatives who actually moved here to Diamond Bar back in 1969, twenty years before incorporation. And of course, back then, nearly all of what is now the city of Diamond Bar was open space, and a lot of the current highways that we have didn't exist either. I do want to, and by the way, I'm also a former candidate for the State Assembly for the Fifty Good District, which includes Diamond Bar and my own city of Walnut, as well as several adjoining cities. The, I'm here partly to echo the concerns of other people that have kind of been expressed by other people regarding the continuing designation of the Diamond Bar portion of the Tracer Manos Ranch as, as keeping, basically keeping open the possibility of development. I have to echo their statement that it needs to be designated as open space. It needs to be protected open space. We've already done more damage to the wildlife migration corridor that passes through there than we should have, and we are suffering the effects of that because the wildlife now are migrating through the neighborhoods. We've basically taken their neighborhoods away. I still remember driving on Golden Springs Road one winter morning and seeing a fully grown deer on the sector divider. When they had nowhere else to go, that's what happens. So I have to echo the concerns of people who've already spoken, but I also want to speak, I didn't feel the need to speak until I heard from the, one of the first speakers, the gentleman who spoke, basically, I'm assuming he's a gas company lobbyist. I have to respond to a couple of things that he said. First of all, I would argue that the term renewable gas, renewable natural gas is a misleading concept. All the gas that is trapped underground is finite and is not renewable. The only truly renewable natural gas is that which is regurgitated by cattle. And, and the other argument that, that natural gas, underground natural gas is not as subject to environmental impacts to the extent that, for example, electricity lines and storages, that's refuted by, all you got to do is look about forty-five miles or fifty miles to our northeast to Elisa Canyon to see evidence why that is not true. So I would argue that what, and this is part of an effort, by the way, that, it's already been reported in Los Angeles Times, this is an effort by gas company lobbyists to go around the state and lobby for local support for, and then basically a resolution that would essentially water down the clean, one hundred percent clean renewable energy provisions of SB one hundred. They had gone from city to city, including Diamond Bar, including my city Walnut, and unfortunately, both cities have given blessing to their, to their resolution without possibly thinking it through. And I would ask that, again, as several people have pointed out, what you were looking at, the information you're providing and the information that some people are providing to you does not present all the facts. And we have to, I have to ask that all the facts be examined carefully and closely before a decision is made. And I hope that when that decision is made, it will again protect the open space in Tracer Manos and again renew our commitment to one hundred percent clean renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I do not have any other speaker card, but the public hearing is still open. If anybody wants to come forward and one who did not fill out the speaker card, they can come and talk about it before we close it. I see none. So at this point, we will close the public hearing, and I will give it to my commissioners if they have any questions to the staff, or any ones from the public who want them to come back. Mr. Rawlings, have something? Go ahead.
So I'll try to make sure that I give my colleagues a little bit of time on these. First, I want to, I want to thank the staff and the consultants that we had. I've been around the city for quite a long time, and I've seen different iterations of plans that were had, and this really captures, I think, a lot of the concerns that we've had over the years. And we're going to start asking probably Mr. Government, I guess, about the nat catcher particularly. We have some of the documents from the US Professional Wildlife Service about spotting of the nat catchers, and I was wondering what would be a process for capturing that in this plan, those spots, or is it just that sightings aren't enough validation of their presence to, to notate that in the, in the planning area?
Yes, thank, thank you, Commissioner Rawlings. I, I would say first that in the draft EIR, that there is a table, I don't have it open at the moment, but it does acknowledge that there have been several recent sightings of the nat catcher within the study area, and it also gave some localized sighting areas that those observations were made. So we can, we can look that up and refer you to that, but it is in the draft EIR document. If there's any, any other specific questions, I may have to defer to our biologist, who is much more, much more qualified than I am to, to address those questions.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr.? Yeah, Commissioner Mark, he have something?
Thank you. Oh, yeah, all right. I'm going to look at, try and find that nat catcher thing, because I want to see what it is and something to do. But I do have a question regarding, we had two people mention the Tracer Manos in terms of the land designation there. So maybe a little education or background on that, because I know that it doesn't just involve us, obviously, that there is some distinction in the ways in which we can approach how to handle anything in relationship with that property. So maybe a little education in what our options would be at this point.
Well, you, you certainly can include in your recommendation to the city council to designate it as open space, but the, the issue, there are issues to consider. One is that in the successful effort to prevent the solar farm from gaining any traction, the, the Tracer Manos Conservation Authority was reformulated and rebooted to include representatives with votes, voting members on the authority from the city's of Industry, who is the, is the owner of the real property, the city's and the city of Chino Hills and city of Diamond Bar. So the Tracer Manos Conservation Authority is the custodian of the land, and they will, they will be, they will be the planning agency, if you will, that's going to guide the efforts. The authority has expressed, I think, pretty clearly that development is not something they're interested in. Their interest is to create opportunities for access through trail planning and through preservation of the natural features and possibly, you know, even finding opportunities to establish mitigation banks within the acreage of Tracer Manos to restore habitat that other developments have, have taken to mitigate those impacts. The other issue is that there is still pending litigation. A San Gabriel Water and Power, this entity is suing the authority and the individual cities, and we've, we've, we've been advised to basically not address land use, planning issues such as land use designations while there's pending litigation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And then I believe Mr. Commissioner Mark has something? A few more questions?
Since we're on the topic of Tracer Manos, can you tell me if this is still in place? There are still seven, seven member governing board of directors, where we have two council members from Chino Hills, two from Diamond Bar, and three from the City of Industry on this board of directors, and they each have one vote in, in case a project were to come up in the future?
I, I don't know how many votes they have or how, how the bylaws are set up, but the makeup is, as you said, and so Chino Hills and Diamond Bar do, would have a majority vote if they, if they were at odds with, say, City of Industry. So basically, you know, cities do have, have virtual veto authority, so.
So Commissioner Mark, do you have any more questions? Looks like you are looking for more.
Well, why don't you come back to me later?
Okay. Yes, please. Commissioner Rawlings, he has some more.
Yeah, I think probably you. First, I wanted to also touch on the Tracer Manos issue. This is one that I have spent a considerable amount of time and energy on over the past number of years. Conservation of open spaces is one of the things that's been a passion of mine my whole life, living here in Diamond Bar. And so I would have to say I'm fairly satisfied with the level of protection currently given by the deep restrictions, primarily because it is counting on the conservation authority in the JPA. And, and the intent there and the reason and how that was founded, I think, is fairly clear as, as we've heard about the structure of. is fair to hear as, as we've heard about the structure of how the board is set up. I think in order to preserve the gains that we've made, I think the only way we can get stronger protection is having the city of California or federal government intervene in, in the use of that land. And I don't think that that's going to happen anytime soon. And so really, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how pending litigation gets resolved. And I would say regarding it being designated as a planning area, I would prefer it be designated as planning area rather than naming a certain type of use for it because that certain type of use would drive the agenda for whatever development that is. Open space may be an option, but that may undo some of the work we've already done. So I just wanted to be on record on that. A couple of other things I heard from Public Committee I also wanted to speak to. I, I heard Mr. Paulson from Responsible Land Use talking about the language being more specific rather than be more flexible. I actually hear that. The question I think is, whether we've asked before, is that the language being as it is currently wouldn't create a problem for us in having more restrictive and specific zoning codes, regulations and site, site specific requirements. Is that correct?
That's correct. When we update the development code, that will have specific development standards and, and restrictions that are regulatory.
Thank you for that. I think while I would prefer generally more specific language throughout as, as the staff and the general plan advisory committee had created, I think I'll be focusing quite a bit on making sure that the, that the code language itself is going to be able to do some enforcement that, that we can. Particularly because as we create these top of documents that have this extended life, I think it's just, it's simply really important for everyone involved, especially like those of you who are here, to hold the city council and the commissions responsible for making the right decision on how the zoning codes are developed, what, what kind of development is allowed and what the culture of the city really looks like. I think we have a good framework here, but this is really just the top of the document. And as we get into those details, that's really where the devil's at, we need to be paying attention to. Last question I think I have on this right now is regarding Mr. Barkum's concern about the noise component. And I wanted to know a little bit more about, and I know I've asked this question before, the process for determining where we chose to include data on noise component versus not, particularly around the rail traffic, if I get this point. And is there a reason why that wasn't included? And I know that we do have some responses on how we can mitigate the noise, but why was it the more detailed?
The, the only honest answer I can give is that the, the noise readings were taken along city surface streets and not, and not the freeway or the railroad. The, the investment in taking the, the noise measurements along the city, the city surface streets, I think is very informative because the noise levels along Grand Avenue and some said, most of Diamond Bar Boulevard are surprisingly higher than you would intuitively think. And that's, that's important when we're still going to have infill and other types of developments occur, to know, you know, what those, those noise levels that you normally only assume are along, you know, the freeways. Having said that, you look at virtually any, any general plan that does include freeways and its noise contours, freeway, say at the right of way line is 70 to 75 decibels. And you, you know that, you know, development adjacent to the freeway is going to have to be subject to noise analysis. And in fact, you know, moving on to the railroad noise, the general plan does include some very specific language in regards to the transit oriented development mixed use district and its adjacency to the, to the, to the railroad. And if you look at page seven dash 41 in Public Safety Element, it, it does say that noise impacts from the railway will need to be considered as the transit oriented mixed use areas developed, particularly in regards to sensitive receptors. So there's, there's, the freeway noise and the railway noise is addressed explicitly in, in the document, in the general plan document. But would it have been nice to have also had those noise contours delineated on that map? Yes, we could, you know, at some point, that's going to be a, a, a business decision to, to have one that's based on, you know, technically valid basis to add those contours. But it's also the case that there are, there's policy language, there's analysis in the general plan and it's, it's obvious to a reasonable person that development adjacent to those noise sources will have to be addressed when we're planning developments within, within their proximity.
So Commissioner Rawling, you have your?
Good for now, yeah.
For now, okay. So I'll give it back to Commissioner Mark.
Were we supposed to discuss the changes that were made from the draft general plan to the one that we see most recently? Specific language or policies that, that were changed? Was this part of the agenda tonight?
Well, your, your recommendation would be whether to, to accept those. During the October 8th study session, in response to the comments and direction we got after September 25th study session, we, we provided red line strikeout versions of all those policies that were of concern to the, to the joint bodies. So the, so the feedback we received after the October 8th meeting was that the, the changes we drafted were acceptable to the, to the, the joint body and therefore we went ahead and incorporated them into the general plan document as, as presented at the October 8th study session. The one, with one exception, we, we did revert back to a, a, the policy language related to electric vehicles, charging stations to, to say that we will develop requirements for, for projects to incorporate accommodations for electric vehicles. And that's consistent with the mitigations in the EIR and with the Climate Action Plan. So that's, that's one, that's the one policy where we are recommending that we keep the originally drafted language.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner, no, Markie has something? Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, I'm back with the Nat Catcher thing.
Yeah.
Okay, where did you, I'm looking at, in chapter five, on page 529, in terms of our resource conservation, I can see that on a figure 5.4 on page five dash 29 in the general plan update, it shows a map that shows, easier for me to understand where the coastal California Nat Catcher may or may not be located in, not our specific area, but certainly in our areas of interest. Easier for me to understand than where it might be located on the map that was provided by us. And so from what I can tell from this, that puts it under special status animals for us in the general plan update. And I'm looking at Director Cumpen, but I might actually be talking to more so you, Mr. Nelson, in terms of what you might know about this, so any input that you would like to throw down, I would love to hear as well. In terms of once, because it's been designated as a special status animal, is there another layer of anything that needs to happen to ensure that it is protected or to ensure that the information that we've recently received from the California Wildlife Game, like I have a hard time telling if this map is represented well in this document. So any information that you can help guide me about information, I would really appreciate. Whoever wants to do it. Thank you.
I can talk about where it's found in the draft EIR chapter?
Thank you.
Yeah, so information about the Nat Catcher is, information about its critical habitat is located on page 3.3-12.
And that's on the draft EIR?
Of the draft EIR.
Thank you.
There's also information on page 3.3-15. And the Nat Catcher is also included in table 3.3-4 titled Special Status Animals/Wildlife Species Occurring or Potentially Occurring Within the Planning Area. And the records column in that states several recent recorded occurrences in the study area at Semperidge and Ventura Parks, State Canyon and Hills South of Diamond Bar Ranch, High School, High Potential and Sage Scrub habitats. And it is also provided in table 3.3-5, which is included as part of mitigation measure by 1F for impact 3.3-1. As a, table 3.3-5 is titled Focus Habitat Evaluations and Surveys. And it does state in that table that there is a high potential for occurrence.
Okay, and some of that information, and correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe I'm, I think that some of that information mimics what we read in the Hamilton report as well, right? That that's similar to what, location wise, was reported in that?
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
You asked the question whether there were additional things that had to be done?
Yes, to ensure that it be protected.
Let me just back up just a second.
Yes.
Number one, there was a question about critical habitat. Critical habitat is a federal designation that is mapped by the federal government to ensure the recovery of the species. At this point, there's no federal critical habitat designated in Diamond Bar. That does not mean that the habitat in which the Nat Catcher occurs in Diamond Bar is not regulated. It's regulated under the Indenture Species Act, under section seven or section 10 of that act. Section seven is if somebody has a federal action that they are proposing, let's say they are proposing to fill or, or take stuff out of a federally jurisdictional wetlands, they can go through section seven. And the Corps of Engineers has to go to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to do a consultation, a section seven consultation to ensure that the Nat Catcher is not going to be adversely affected. If there's no federal action required, then you have to go through a section 10, which is Habitat Conservation Plan for the Nat Catcher. So the Nat Catcher, as far as the city's concerned, other than making sure, as it says in the EIR, that any time you get into or you project any removal or impacts to its habitat, coastal state scrub, you need to do surveys. Other than that, it's all federal. It's all a federal action after that point in time. So there was never an attempt to diminish the Nat Catcher as being occupying habitat in Diamond Bar. And the second thing to remember is the fact that it wasn't mapped doesn't, there was a reason for that. These are birds. They fly. And they've obviously flown from either Benelli or from the Pointe Hills into Diamond Bar and they now occupy the habitat. And to start specifying where exactly they're found as opposed to saying what we did in the EIR, that any time you're involved in coastal state scrub, you have to do surveys for them, might mislead the naive person to think that, well, it's not confound here. So we can do whatever we want here. That's not the case and that's not what the EIR says.
Thank you. I believe Commissioner Rawling has more questions, so go ahead.
So, so having been at this for a little while, at least now, one of these I think would be helpful is maybe explanation as, as we have talked about the need to do more specific surveys when we have projects coming up and doing something site specific because I think a lot of the, the active protection of species is going to occur when we have the site specific surveys. And so I was wondering if there could be an explanation about when you have a proposed project come in to City Hall, what steps do we take to ensure that the proper surveys are being conducted?
If, if a project is, like for example, the, the Hampton Inn project recently, that we hired a consultant to do the environmental analysis and based on their expertise in site conditions, the freeway adjacency requires, requires comments from, from Caltrans. There are other issues that are set forth in CEQA about, you know, light and shadow impacts, noise impacts, traffic intersection impacts and so forth. So through, through, through our, our own knowledge and, and understanding of the planning process and through working with the environmental experts that we enlist, we go through that analysis process. One, one project that may be more relevant to the subject matter that we're discussing is the, is the vacant, currently vacant land at the south end of Crooked Creek, which there was previously a subdivision approved, that approval expired and there are, the current owners are interested in proceeding with a new subdivision proposal. There, that project's going to be subject to an environmental impact report. There has been an observation of a, of a species of, a special status bird called the Weasbells Furiio that was encountered during the Edison Overheadline project that is in Tanner Canyon. So U.S. Fish and Wildlife is already, you know, aware and concerned about that. There, there are widows on the property and, and there are a whole host of other potential environmental sensitivities associated with that site. So as part of the EIR, the, the scope of work is going to include surveys for certain special status plant species. They have to occur with, during certain times of the year when, when, per protocol, that that's when you survey for them. Nat Catcher surveys would be part of that. And whatever other indicators based on the plant communities in that area that would support certain types of plant or animal species, those would be, those would be part of that biological impact. of that biological impact analysis component of the EIR. And then it would be subject to public review, review by California Fish and Wildlife. If, if, since the property's also in the vicinity of Gray Canyon Creek, there, there's potential Army Corps interest in that, in that site. So it's going to be subject to, to first our, our EIR process, and then through the public review process, goes through state, and then through the State Clearinghouse, they will also make decisions on whom should be reviewing the draft EIR and the public. And we do have an engaged public here that's going to look at it very closely, and will, you know, so for those site-specific potential impacts, they'll be, they'll be zeroed in on it, that, they'll be in the weeds.
May I add to that, Greg? Initially, before an EIR is determined to be needed, CEQA requires that you do an initial study. And it follows Appendix G of the CEQA guidelines. And one of the questions of the, I think, six or seven that are in there regarding biological resources is, could the project have an effect on any listed or special status species? So before a decision's made about an EIR, the applicant would have to come in with his initial study. And typically, that's going to involve a study by a biologist to determine what's on site, what could be on site, what might be affected by it. And that's, and that's the early warning position, that now the city's aware, we got this issue, plus they've got the general plan, and the policies and the mitigation measures required there. So it's not something that can be overlooked.
So last comment I wanted to make on this, I think, is, I just wanted to thank the staff for including some of the California Department of Fish and Wildlife notes and processes that they'd submitted. I particularly noted, this is in the fourth tab under the final EIR, particularly on the revisions for page 3.3-37, and including some of those processes and guidelines, I think it's very helpful for people to be aware of.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mock, looks like you are thinking of another question.
I'm always thinking.
You're, wouldn't that get to ask?
Well, since you asked. We received some documents this afternoon, and I believe one of them, or maybe it was in my reading this afternoon, referring back to the project at Sycamore Canyon Park. This might be a question that's more appropriate for parks and recreation, but maybe someone can answer it for me. It was noted that in the repair of the slope at Sycamore Canyon Park, that some oak trees were, now, I don't know what happened, but were they removed in the process of repairing that slope? Or had they fallen already as a result of the storm and the water runoff from the higher elevations? That was one thing I was puzzled about. And two was that, what disturbed me was, and this is not verbatim, but several city staff were quoted to said that oak trees weren't protected. And I, the second comment was a definition-type comment. Let's see, where's it done? Okay, oh, we're removed with no permits and no replacement of natmade vegetation? And the area is classified as Sycamore riparian? But the staff member mentioned that oaks aren't protected, and it's not a riparian habitat. So could someone respond to that? I don't, I don't think so.
I can take a shot at that. You can't just take out a bunch of oak trees and say that because we're going to meet the city requirements, that we've mitigated that to less than significant. You also have to consider the taking of the oak woodland, and what that's going to do from a long-term conservation and preservation standpoint. But as an individual species, no, they are not protected.
So in reference to what our, one of our citizens came up, our fifth speaker, Robin Smith, talked about in the letter that we received from her, which is a little bit of what Commissioner Mock was talking about, one of the things that she stated in the letter and then stated in person for us is that the, when Sycamore Canyon Park erosion repair was done, and I know we're a little off of the general plan update at this point, but since we're figuring out if the general plan will allow this to happen again, if this is what happened, like, it's sort of important. So the example that she gave us, that Ms. Wright gave us, is the idea that the erosion repair project replaced a certain type of vegetation with other vegetation that was going to be detrimental to that entire area. It was going to take over, and it was going to just erode everything. And it didn't speak to the nature of what that land was supposed to do in terms of supporting the biodiversity. So what, and I don't know about this particular thing, as I just got this email information, so I don't even know how to follow up on this specific thing, although I think it's worth looking into, but what protects it from happening either in any of these finders in front of me or elsewhere? It's really broad, but if you can guide us, that would be helpful. Is that helpful for anyone?
Well, I can't, I can't speak to the actions of the city, who's not involved in that. But the EIR is pretty specific about replacing native vegetation and habitat with native vegetation and habitat. So from a standpoint of a private development, they're required to adhere to those mitigation measures. Again, I, the city, you know, felt that it was necessary to put in something that was going to be more protective against future floods. But I, you know, I was not involved in that, obviously. It's not part of the general plan development. But it is taken care of in the EIR and the general plan policies as something that needs to be done into the future.
Thank you.
So anybody else, any other commissioner have any other question? Commissioner Mock? Are you satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner, I'm good, okay. We have some.
I just have one more question, because I know it's in here somewhere, but I have a feeling that Director Cumpen just knows the answer. When are we due to update any of our plans in terms of protected species of trees, environment, any of that type of thing? Like, you had just talked about, the housing update is in 2020. And for me, I sort of agree with what Commissioner Rawlings was saying, is that some of this is bigger, and then we get, the more detailed is that, at that expert, more expert level, between the staff and the commissions, understanding those types of updates. So if the housing update is happening in 2022, do we have an update coming for any of our environmental tree, or do we just defer to sort of state and federal guidelines there?
Well, we do have to undertake a comprehensive development code update. So our zoning regulations, to implement the general plan, we have to update our zoning regulations, and the, you know, the tree preservation and protection is an entire chapter in the code.
Thank you. I knew it was somewhere in my brain, but I couldn't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was my, sorry. Commissioner Rawlings, you, you, do you have any question?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Yeah, because I know kind of, we are, once we are moved forward, and we forward this to city council, the next step would be our, to move forward with the zoning codes and development codes and everything. Is there any timeline? Do we have anything in, like, I'm pretty sure there must be, but I just want to know because.
You don't want to let me take just a little break? We, we have to get a jump on the housing element. We've got to get going on that right away.
Okay. And another thing is, when you were discussing, we revised a few things, and I was looking at the, we revised the North Diamond Bar from the neighborhood mixed use, and revised it to the commercial general plan update. Can you just briefly tell me about that one? I am a little bit, want to know that one.
So the, the neighborhood mixed-use district is shown in pink on the, on the illustrations on the screen. The district, in the draft, in the public review draft land use plan, extended from Highland Valley Road on the north to the, the eastbound 60 off-ramp on the south. So it jumped Sensei Crossing Road, and then to those properties on the south. Currently, those properties south of Sensei Crossing Road that are shown in pink on the left illustration, currently they're zoned commercial, general commercial. And like I indicated, at that corner is the Wiener Schnitzel Restaurant. The, the property south of the Wiener Schnitzel site is, is a, for the most part, a slope. It's a hill. And homes on Decorah Road are on the top of that hill. And there's very little opportunity, there's very little flat area on that site. And it's probably, given the, given the topography, and given the adjacency to the freeway off-ramps, you can't, you can't get a building up to the street like the community character and place-making goals of having, you know, parking, parking behind buildings, and buildings having a direct interface with, with the street. Also with the freeway off-ramp, there's, there's no opportunity to turn left into that site. So it, it has a, and then just in terms of walkability, it's, it's really, it, it's really, has some physical barriers that aren't really conducive to being part of that neighborhood mixed-use neighborhood that we envisioned. So we just have to, you know, agree that it's, it's unlikely that the development on that site could meet those, those, those policies, those, those objectives for what we want the neighborhood mixed-use district's character to evolve into over the years. So it's, it's, so in our opinion, it's more appropriate to keep it as a commercial designation.
Thank you very much for explaining it. I believe this is the right move, because when we, I was looking into it, and that's exactly what I was thinking, that how we're going to do the mix, neighborhood mix in that area. So thank you very much for that. At this point, any commissioner has any comment, any question, anything? So my question to you or Mr. James would be that if we want to have move and have the motion on that, do we have to do the motion separately of 7.1A, 7.1B, 7.1C with the changes in it?
I'm sorry, with the, I'm sorry. With the changes?
With the changes, and if you don't mind.
Oh, the changes to the?
Yeah. And if you don't mind, can you read if we want to move the motion to approve or something? Would you mind reading with that changes? There are so many, I did not write it down.
Let me be clear, though. I, the, the changes aren't something we're walking on or proposing tonight. These, these are changes that were incorporated into the final EIR and into the public hearing draft general plan. I just wanted to highlight those to, to be clear how, what the distinctions between the draft documents and the public hearing documents are. So in, in this slide here, I, I listed the, really the five key revisions between the, the draft EIR and the public review draft general plan had, and what revisions were made based on the, the public comments received and the direction we received during the September and August study sessions. So every, all of that is, if you make your motion, that those things aren't incorporated into that already.
Thank you very much for the explanation. Okay. So at this point, the, Commissioner Mocky, do you have something?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to recommend approval to the city council with one slight designation, asking for special consideration for zoning change for trace harmonos when appropriate, in terms of the legal standing.
General plan designation to open space?
Yes, please.
We have a motion with this, teachers, do we have a second?
One second.
Can we have a vote on that, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Mock?
Yes.
Commissioner Rawlings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Farago?
Aye.
And Chair Wallace?
Yes. So move it, I guess. Finally, item number eight is the planning commission comments. If you are not tired, you still have energy, you can, anything, I would love to hear from you guys, and I think, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I am tired, but not tired enough to thank not only the staff and the commissioners here for all the hard work and the time that you spent preparing all of this material, and the commissioners for reading it all. I mean, it took a lot of concentration and a lot of time. But I especially want to thank the public who's sitting out there. Many of you are members of the GPAC. And it was repeated again and again, the amount of time and effort and passion it took to contribute, what you, what you contributed to this document. And it was no small task, all right? So what we did to read it So what we did to read it was nothing compared to what all of you did, especially you GPAC members that are out there. So I appreciate your coming to voice your opinions. You're coming to express your passions about certain things that are in the GPAC or in the Climate Action Plan or the EIRs. It's greatly appreciated, and it doesn't go without mentioning that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I can see Commissioner Rawlings has his hand on the button. Go ahead.
I think Commissioner Mark took my script here. You know, this really is such an important part of what makes our democracy work. And at times, sometimes it feels like we don't make a difference, but I can say, having seen quite a number of you on such a regular basis coming to our meetings, you are actually really making a difference for us. We don't always get to the point we want to reach, but I think we're at a very good place, especially around the idea of conservation and preservation of biodiversity. There is more work to do, especially when it comes down to the different codes and regulations, getting it under those details. I know you're all going to be engaged in that process as well. But I do want to say thank you to everyone in the public that has come and participated and give us your feedback and done your best to hold us accountable and make us aware of the issues you're concerned about, because through this process, it helps inform the staff, and the staff are here to serve and support us. But as we move forward, we need to keep on that and keep supporting the staff and making sure we're doing the right thing. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And I can see...
I'm going to bring another one to echo this, but as a little bit of a different slant, because particularly for the audience members who are disappointed in us tonight or feel like we didn't hold up our end of the bar, didn't stand by, it doesn't change the respect that I have for you for coming out. And as an instructor at Cal Poly who teaches argumentation and advocacy, you are oftentimes the examples that I give to my students about why learning how to publicly speak and be critical thinkers and come out and stand up for what you believe in is important and What you said makes a difference. And I don't know if you know that or not, but I think it's important that I say it, even if you don't necessarily believe it. But what you say to us when you educate us with your passion and your experience makes a difference in the decisions that we make in here. It certainly does for me, and I think it does for the entire commission as well as the city and staff. So I appreciate you coming out. I appreciate you being brave enough to stand up and publicly speak. I know that that's challenging. And I appreciate the diligent work that you do to make sure that we are educated about what you're passionate about. So thank you for your time and energy. And Steph, of course, thank you for your time and energy as well.